Good evening and welcome to tonight's Monday, October 20th, 2025 City Council Meeting. I'll first await a motion to leave the non-public and to seal the minutes of the non-public session.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, Kelly, will you please take the roll?
Yes. Mayor McCaffrey.
Here.
Assistant Mayor Kelly.
Here.
Councilor Taber.
Here.
Councilor Cook.
Here.
Councilor Detton.
Here.
Council Blaylock.
Here.
Council Bagley.
Here.
Council Moreau.
Here.
Council Lombardi.
Here.
And as we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, I'd ask both Jacob Turk and David Flavin to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Great job, guys. And if you wouldn't, if you'd be so kind as to come up here, we have your proclamations that I was going to read on. I was hoping that you guys could be up here to do it with me. Is that a deal? A little bit of a curveball? Sorry I didn't tell your parents.
You ready? You guys can go right up this way.
So while Jacob and David are coming up here, I just, we have a program here in the city of Portsmouth where kids can win the chance to be mayor for a day, and they have really upped the game in terms of what we're talking about and what they want to dedicate it to. So what's the deal? Do you guys want to read each of yours, or do you want me to read it for you and you guys stand next to me while we do it?
I'll read it.
You'll read it, all right. David, all right, you're up first. You can sit there. Oh, you just stand right there.
Whereas the city of Portsmouth has many organizations that work incredibly hard day after day to make sure everyone has a home to sleep in, food to eat, water to drink, and clothes to wear. Whereas in the city of Portsmouth, we want to recognize the hard work of these organizations and the people that keep them running, and whereas without the help of these organizations, our community members that rely on these services will face hardships we could prevent, and whereas these organizations rely on the generosity of Portsmouth community to deliver and sentimental services. Now, therefore, I, David Flavin, mayor of the city of Portsmouth, on behalf of the members of the city council and citizens of Portsmouth, hereby proclaim Good Neighbor Day in Portsmouth. I call on every citizen to be able to volunteer their time, money, and/or expertise to find organizations in need and help their neighbors.
Yeah, this is the original, this is the original one here, yeah.
Oh, this one's from British, this one's mine.
Well, I'm going to give you that just to make sure that you keep on doing great work. Which one is yours? Well, you have that one in your hand, but you also have this one, yes. You put that there. Awesome job, David. All right, Jacob, do you want to read yours as well? Ah, yes, all right.
The city of Portsmouth has many splendid natural beauties like our parks, islands, and pastoral waterfronts. And keeping trash out of the streets and keeping the air clean allows us to enjoy the greenery in Portsmouth, and the employees of the city pick up trash and sweep our streets. But there is still more work to be done, and the city of Portsmouth already established its own eco-mutual, multi-carri. Municipality showing that we value our natural resources and focus on combating climate change. Therefore, I, Jacob Turk, Mayor of the city of Portsmouth, on behalf of the mayors of the city, members of the city council, and the citizens of Portsmouth, do here, I proclaim Community Cleanup Day in Portsmouth, and urge to all members of the community to part every, but especially every day, but especially on July 15th, the last day of school.
You're here. Oh, David already ran away. As the council come down, just take a quick picture with the mayor's part better than you. And so we'll do one first with David, if David's family would want to come up, and then Jacob will lead one with you, is that a deal? All right. Yeah, best lighting, best lighting, always. One, two, three. One, two, three. Oh, I got a microphone now. One, two, three.
Yeah, they do when you have a picture taken.
Now, you guys don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting, I'm sure you guys, you know, have to go to bed, but I just, before you leave, I just, it's so gratifying that our city is full with, you know, such amazing kids, and I think that everybody here, you know, we talk about the future all the time on the council, we talk about it in a year, in five years, in 10 years, if we're talking about the master plan, but what we're always talking about is you guys. And so that when you're given an opportunity to speak and make proclamations, that David and Jacob, you guys made proclamations that were really fantastic, that thought about the future, thought about other people, and if we can act with that same care, we're going to be okay as a city and as a country. So just thank you for being you guys, and we're going to try real hard to make sure that we live up to your mark, so thank you, guys. All right, we have one special, well, another proclamation that wasn't on the list, but only because it was being kept to surprise, but not because I see some people here. Whereas the city of Portsmouth is a community rich in history, creativity, and civic pride, and each year our residents come together on Halloween night to celebrate the season with imagination and a little bit of scariness. And whereas since one rainy Halloween night in 1994, when a small ragtag group of marchers braved the rain and shambled and hollered their weight along city streets, the Portsmouth Halloween Parade has become a beloved tradition, showcasing artistry, inclusivity, and spirited participation we have come to expect from Portsmouth. And whereas it now draws thousands of visitors from near and far to witness a spectacle of costumes, musics, and celebrations garnering national attention, is one of the best Halloween parades in the country. And whereas this year marks the 30th March, and the event continues to be organized and supported by volunteers, local businesses, artists, and neighbors who dedicate their time and talents to ensure a safe, vibrant, and memorable experience for all, and whereas the parade reflects the values of Portsmouth, welcoming all who wish to participate, encouraging self-expression, and fostering a sense of unity through shared celebration. Now, therefore, I, Daryl McCaffrey, Mayor of the city of Portsmouth, on behalf of the members of the city council and citizens of Portsmouth, do hereby proclaim October 31st, 2025, in Portsmouth, as Halloween Parade Day, and urge all residents and visitors to join the festivities, celebrate responsibly, reaffirm our commitment to creativity, self-expression, and to a sound barbaric yap over the roofs of the world in support of the Portsmouth Halloween Parade, given with my hand and the seal of the city of Portsmouth on this 20th day of October 2025. Now, I see, we can clap for that. The members who make this happen, and by make this happen, I mean entirely without, you know, this is not a city event, so it's kind of weird being in City Hall itself, you know, you're not like, don't worry, you're still cool, even though we're celebrating you. But if you could come and take a picture, and if you'd like to give any remarks, please, welcome to do so, but we're just excited that there's people like you making Portsmouth the place that we all know and love. Do you want to come?
Yeah. You don't need all of us.
I was like, long time no see. I'm a little disappointed there's no costume.
Johnny, I was expecting a full Elvis suit. A little broken.
So the Halloween Parade is now officially a 501(c)(3), raising money. You might have missed them at the pumpkin smash, there's still opportunities to get some Offsham swag, and so thank you, guys, thank you, guys, again. Next up, we have a pretty big deal. We have the chance to do something that we haven't been able to do in 63 years, and that is recognize and congratulate the Portsmouth High School golf team for a Division II state championship. Gus tells me that Junior Greg Gagnon was the medalist in low score for the tournament for the second year in a row with a score of 69 for the par 72 course. That's... That's the front nine for me. So the Portsmouth High School Clipper Golf Team finished the 2025 regular season with a record of 27-2, placing them in second place in Division II at the end of the regular season. Last Tuesday, the PHS Clipper Golf Team won the NHIA Division II Golf State Championship at Mount Washington Golf Course. You will now move up to Division I starting next season, and I'm sure you're excited for the new challenge. So I would love to be able to recognize each with an award. If you guys could come up as I say your name, grab the award, and then we'll do a picture with the whole council right after that. Makes sense? Awesome. All right, so first, Greg Gagnon. Next, Tyce Bealan. Tyce Bealan, that's her, all right. Next up, Gus Baker. Next, Grant Haberstroh. Next, Turner Laduke. Next, Alec Lawton. And Gus Alati. And Will Rena. Kyle Harrison, are you here? Excellent, all right.
I play Carson's golf. High school, that was my high school court.
I took a class called Individual Dual Games.
Yeah, but I'll speak to all of them. I'll for a guess.
That wasn't one of your better ideas, was it, to have them stand in front?
That was my idea. No, it was because everyone's being... They should stand in front. Very less important. No one needs more pictures of us, that's for damn sure.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council, for this incredible honor. One of the things about a coach, you have to have talent, of course, but you also need kids that are coachable, and these kids are coachable. They listen, they learn, they strive to improve, and they care very much about each other, their coaches, the other, the competitors that they play against, they're a very respectful group, and I'm very proud of them, I know their parents are proud, and I know the community is very proud, and they deserve this honor, and they've been just a terrific group to work with, so thank you again for this honor, I really appreciate it. Thank you.
Signing up for lessons.
So, Nutt, we don't have anyone...
You missed minutes.
Did I? Did I?
Yeah, you kind of skipped over.
I did.
I checked things off, that's why.
You know, that's, yeah, talk about not making par. All right, we have the August 18th, 2025 City Council minutes on there.
I'll move to accept the minutes of August 18th, 2025.
Sorry, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have public comment, we don't have anybody signed up.
We have one hand on Zoom.
One hand on Zoom, Mr. Garzo, when you can speak, please do so.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council, reporting to you live from the Gulf of Maine, but Tyler Garzo, 62 McKinley. Very briefly, I wanted to ask the council to look at what is going on in York right now with license plate scanning. New Hampshire's license plate scanning laws expire in 2027, and permanent license plate scanners invade individual privacy, and we may need to take a position on this matter, but thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. Seeing no other hands and nobody rising, we're signed up, we will move to our first public hearing and vote on ordinance. First reading of ordinance amending Chapter 6, Licenses, Article 1, General Provisions by amending the title of Chapter 6 to Licenses and Incumbrances and replacing Article 1 in its entirety with Article 1, Incumbrance Permits and Licenses for the Use of Public Property, Sections 6.101 through 6.110.
Your Honor, I move to pass first reading and schedule a public hearing and second reading at November 17th, 2025 City Council meeting.
Sixth, oh, second?
Sixth.
It's where I'm landing soon.
Your Honor, if I could speak to this for just a moment. For the public out there and for the council, you're going to see several motions here on first reading. The first thing you see tonight is the full ordinance that's put together from all the other ordinance changes that you see behind it, and we will have a full presentation on that at our next meeting, if it gets passed first reading and if all the rest do as well. We had a lot of outstanding work done by the legal team, particularly Attorney Farini, in getting all of this work put together over many months in the Governance Committee, so thank you to the Governance Committee, and thank you to Attorney Farini.
You're here. Councilor Moreau.
If I can just ask one question, as I was reading through the ones that we're getting rid of and the one that we're creating, which, thank you for all the good work that went into this, I just noticed there was nothing in the new ordinance that talks about, and one of the, one does about hold harmless indemnity of the city and insurance, so I just want to make sure there are other policies or other mechanisms that are addressing that.
I think I can probably address that, Attorney Farini will address it better than I will, but I will say that we handle this in the licensing process, so it doesn't need to be in the ordinance itself, because it will come in the licensing process and the permitting process.
Good evening, yes, that's correct, so all of our permits now have a requirement for insurance, and that's built right into the permits, which, as you're reading through, there are going to be quite a few new ones, so thanks.
Thank you.
Any other questions? And again, this is for first reading, so put it on, public hearing, presentation at second reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up, first reading of ordinance amending Chapter Six Licenses Article Ten Theatricals, Parades, Open Air Meetings, Section six-point-one-zero-zero-one. License required, Section six-point-one-zero-zero-two-dash-license-form, Section six-point-one-zero-zero-three. Fee, Section six-point-one-zero-zero-four. Penalty for failure to license be deleted in its entirety.
Your Honor, move to pass first reading and schedule a public hearing and second reading at the November seventeenth, Council meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, first reading of ordinance amending Chapter Seven Vehicles, Traffic, and Parking, Article One Parking Meter, Section seven-point-one-one-four. Construction permit be deleted in its entirety.
Your Honor, I move to pass first reading and schedule a public hearing and second reading at the November seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five City Council meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, first reading of ordinance amending Chapter Eight Encumbrances and Injurious Practices in Streets, Article One Encumbrances, Section eight-point-one-zero-one. Encumbrances, General, Section eight-point-one-zero-five. Digging up a street, Section eight-point-one-zero-six. License to obstruct a street, Section eight-point-one-one-four. Owning and signs, Section eight-point-one-two-zero. Displaying merchandise on sidewalk, be deleted in its entirety.
Your Honor, I move to pass first reading and schedule a public hearing and second reading at the November seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five City Council meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? This is also a part of this larger part. We're not just, you know, deleting that you can dig up the streets whenever you want. It's all part of a broader plan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, first reading of ordinance amending Chapter Nine Article Five Public Way Obstructions, Placement and Registration, including Section nine-point-five-zero-one and nine-point-five-one-one, be deleted in its entirety.
Your Honor, I move to pass the first reading and schedule a public hearing and second reading on November seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five City Council meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, first reading of ordinance amending Chapter Eleven Sidewalks, Sewers, Layouts of Streets, Subdivision of Land, Article Six Referrals to Planning Board, Section eleven-point-six-zero-two-A-one. Referral and report.
Your Honor, I move to pass first reading and schedule a public hearing and second reading at the November seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five City Council meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? I would simply say thank you again to the Governance Committee. There's a lot of work that went into this, to Attorney Farini. You know, we talk a lot about how do we streamline government, make it easier. It's a lot of work to get rid of rules and consolidate them, as, you know, we just witnessed going through all of those just to get, you know, something better. And so just appreciate all the work that went into this. You know, hopefully this will be a simpler, easier path to understand how to do government a little bit more efficiently. So thank you for that. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we have first reading of ordinance amended to Chapter Ten Zoning Ordinance, Zoning Map, Article Four Zoning District and Use Regulation, Section ten-point-four-two-one. District Location and Boundaries, Section ten-point-four-two-one-point-one-zero. Be amended to remove one-oh-nine Denit, tax map one-forty-two what, twenty-seven, from the historic district overlay.
Your Honor, I move to pass first reading and schedule a public hearing and a second reading of the proposed zoning map amendment at the November seventeenth, twenty-twenty-five City Council meeting.
Second for discussion.
So in order to get to the presentation, we will need to have second reading, and the report back from the planning board will be at the, at the, at the, as a presentation as a part of the.
I was actually asked to report back at this meeting verbally from the meeting that happened last Thursday.
Okay.
And I'm prepared to do so if you're willing to let me.
Sure.
Yes, so the, we voted to recommend the City Council not remove one-oh-nine Denit Street from the Historic District Commission. They had the City Planning Board, sorry, getting confused in my meetings, had several points that I very carefully wrote down, and I'm hoping I can read my writing. So Planning Board members had several questions, both for staff and for the Vice Chair of the HDC, who is actually at our meeting, to be able to ask questions to. I guess there were many years ago, this owner had been told that this property was actually in the Historic District. I forget how many years ago, but it was many years ago, that there was an oversight, that staff had told her that she wasn't in the Historic District, I think, when she first talked to them, but then they did call and correct that mistake. And had the contractor properly pulled permits, then it would have been discovered that she was in the Historic District. And they just feel like that we shouldn't go against the recommendations of our Historic District Commission. Their theory and what they talked to us about was the fact that the Walker Street area, they like to have all the houses that face the street, on both sides of the street, be part of the Historic District, and that's the reasoning for having that specific property in it. And, you know, they feel that this is truly not punitive, but it's actually, you know, for all residents, the most fair reasoning to move forward would be to leave it in the Historic District. So that was the vote of the Planning Board last Thursday.
Councilor Lombardi.
Yes, I would just like to say that this is a historic house, and it's an eighteen-sixties house. It has a rather unique architecture in Portsmouth. It's, it has a, what's called a Cape Cod dormer on it, and it's, and there's not, there's a few of them in Portsmouth, but this is pretty representative of that particular style. I would emphasize that there is an established process to appeal a decision of the HDC, and that is to go, you appeal, and then it goes to the Board of Adjustment, who acts as an HDC under the rules of the HDC and considers it. If they continue to uphold the ruling of the HDC, then the owner has the ability to go and file through the Superior Court for resolution. So there is an established process that is defined well and established. There was no permit applied for, as far as I know, for this project. And so I think that the errors are both with the owner and with the contractor. And I just think that it's a mistake to really, I think it's an affront to our land use boards, actually, to bring this before this body, when they have been united in backing the decision of the HDC.
Councilor Boylott.
Thank you, Your Honor. And I did make the motion. I don't, I don't know how I feel about it. I worry about the precedent it sets. As Council Lombardi said, there is a process set up, but I also do sympathize with the homeowner. But I just want to be clear that.
Council Bagley.
Thank you, Your Honor. I did have the pleasure to speak with the homeowner, the contractor, several of the neighbors, and a number of citizens, because this seems to be a pretty emotive issue with no, with good cases to be made for both sides. So I would just encourage any residents that have a strong opinions about this to either come to the public hearing that we'll have at the next meeting, or to reach out to the council with their thoughts.
Have to vote for it first. Council Denton.
Thank you. I would simply encourage everyone to follow our normal established process, which is the past first reading and allow second reading to have a public hearing.
Council Cook.
Thank you, Your Honor. I feel very sympathetic to this homeowner, because I understand what it's like to be in the Historic District. I am. I have a home in Historic District. It sometimes costs more money to do repairs in the Historic District, but it's something that you just have to plan for. And I, I feel very bad for this homeowner, that the repairs ended up being, or will end up being more than anticipated cost. But at the same time, I understand the value of the Historic District, and I also understand the recommendations that have come forward from the Historic District Commission and the Planning Board. I don't want to get into a position that the council becomes somehow a review of our land use boards, because the council is, is not designed to review land use at this level. It's one thing if we get recommendations from the Planning Board to change our zoning, or recommendations from the Historic District Commission to change the layout of the Historic District. But when we don't receive those recommendations, this board does not have the expertise to weigh in on land use. That's not what we do on a regular basis, and that's why we have those boards and those experts. So I don't support a motion coming forward to change necessarily the layout of the Historic District, especially if we didn't get recommendations from the Planning Board or the Historic District Commission to do so, and I think it sets a bad precedent. At the same time, I hope that our community, our community is a very generous community. I hope our community finds ways to help this homeowner find a solution, which means maybe providing assistance to this one.
Any other, being none, I'll support this to the second reading, specifically to have the public hearing for two reasons. I guess the first, I'd like to understand, you know, where the information was given, if there was a change in there, understanding that there was information that was given to her at one point. I'd also like to understand, I guess, a bit more on the, as the Council Lombardi, who would know better than most, the application or the appeal process. This seems like if it was a one for inability from a financial standpoint, would have been a financial hardship that the ZVA would have applied there, and, you know, if they were granted. But I guess more specifically than that, there was a thing that Council Moreau mentioned, and that was with Walker Streets included because buildings wanting to face the street?
So they want the buildings facing the properties that, above that street, to be on the Historic District on both sides, which is why this one was included, so that both sides of that whole school street, Walker Street, on both sides of the street, all those properties are included.
Okay, so both sides of the street. And so understanding that, and also understanding where this was from a original standpoint in nineteen ninety-five, before the two maps were converged into one. I'd like just a little bit more history on this, because that's the thing that I haven't yet been able to quite understand, is when this became an HDC and what did it come as an HDC. At least doing my own research, trying to figure out how this was originally as a part of the HDC overlay that only allowed for prevention of demolition, and then in an ordinance change became a part of the HDC as we converged all of those, to be able to understand, I guess, the history of that, to better address this one particular issue. But I guess we'll have a, we can do a roll call vote.
Yes, please. Assistant Mayor Kelly.
Yes.
Counselor Taber.
Yes.
Counselor Cook.
No.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Counselor Blaylock.
Yes.
Counselor Bagley.
Yes.
Counselor Moreau.
No.
Counselor Lombardi.
No.
Mayor McCaffrey.
Yes.
That is for second reading.
Six to three.
Next up, public hearing on resolution and adoption. Resolution appropriating two million five hundred thousand dollars to purchase one fire apparatus and authorizing a bond issue and/or notes of up to two million five hundred thousand dollars to meet this appropriation.
Your Honor, Fire Chief Bill McQuillan is here. We don't have a formal presentation, but he just has a brief reminder of what the project entails. Welcome, Chief.
Good evening, Your Honor and members of the council. So as a reminder, from the previous time I was here before you, we, we have a situation where fire truck manufacturers have experienced long lead times in delivering fire apparatus due to a variety of marketing conditions and reasons, be it that there was a lot of COVID money that went around to municipalities, state and local governments, who took advantage of those monies and moved things around, spending priorities. So increase in orders for fire apparatus. Additionally, there were several fire apparatus manufacturers who were bought up by other manufacturers, and that has led to a, the conditions where that we're in now. So I came to you three years ago to purchase a fire truck under a similar set of circumstances, where we were looking to get the first reading so that we could get it moved up, and I still haven't got that fire truck delivered. So in working with finance, the thought was that yet again we'd come to you and try and cut off seven months of this lead time. Right now, the current lead time for fire apparatus of this type is anywhere from forty-one to sixty months. So that having been said, the original plan was to have this fire truck replaced in FY-28. That was, again, operating under normal circumstances, where we would get the vehicle within a year or so, which would then allow us to be able to keep to our replacement schedule and get the current ladder truck off the road and into a reserve status within ten years of frontline service. So the truck that we're looking to replace is a two thousand seven vintage fire truck that was projected to last us, when we purchased it, seventeen years, which would have been last year. However, as we've, you know, we bought a different fire truck, we moved it in a rotation, we're able to keep the current truck on, in service as a reserve vehicle, and it's still got some useful life left in it, and we haven't had any major issues with it. However, that having been said, what we're trying to do here, again, is to move up that production time, get it delivered, and hopefully lock in a price shortly. And the, the goal would be to try and save some money by locking in today's dollars. The fire apparatus is a ladder truck. It's a critical piece of equipment that we use when fighting fires, and also in technical rescues, both as a platform, as a device that we can anchor to, to do above and below grade rescues, and then it fires to be able to access roofs, be able to rescue folks, and to carry a variety of equipment and tools, including more ground ladders. Again, we work with finance to find a way to get this done in this, the environment that we're in and with the conditions and circumstances that we're at. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have, but there's my brief overview for you.
Thank you, Fire Chief. Council Bagley.
Thank you, Fire Chief. Some fun fire truck questions for you. Is this a tower truck?
Yes.
And could you, one of the things that comes up quite frequently when I'm talking to residents is that if we build tall buildings, we have to buy New York City or Boston-style tower trucks. Can you kind of talk about the limitations of fire trucks and how they're kind of the same size everywhere?
No, thank you for the question, counselor. I think that's a, the standard in the fire service is a hundred-foot aerial device. By and large, fire trucks here in Portsmouth are the same size as fire trucks in Boston or New York or some of these other cities. Realistically, we're looking to hit, you know, the fifth or sixth floor of a building, depending on how much access we have in the front of it or with the roads. But by and large, that's the fire service industry. There are some trucks that you can get specially made that are a little bit higher, but a hundred feet plus or minus is the, is the industry standard.
So to just follow up, that means this fire truck, regardless of what gets built in the next ten years, is going to be suitable to?
That's, that's correct. And as part of that, counselor, to elaborate a little bit more, that's why the Fire Department serves on the Technical Advisory Committee, so that when these projects come forward, we can make sure that we have a fire lane, we have enough turning radius, we have enough slope and grades that our trucks will be able to get up and in, and so that we can put our jacks and outriggers out so that the truck can actually swing and be deployed properly.
Great, thank you.
Council Boylock.
Thank you, Your Honor. Chief, I just want to thank you for having enough foresight, you know, to realize the production time and the lead time that would take, and so we're not without a fire engine.
Thanks. It's some challenging and interesting times.
Yeah, can't imagine.
Well, thank you again, Chief McQuillan. Other, let's see, we got to go to the public, we'll open the public hearing on, unless there's other council questions, we'll open the public hearing.
One hand on Zoom, Your Honor.
One hand. Okay.
Good evening again, council, Titer Garza, sixty-two McKinley. So we all want fast fire response, and this demand is often expressed in seconds, and effectively it mandates the Fire Department to block traffic. effectively it mandates the Fire Department to block traffic calming infrastructures such as speed tables and narrow roads, which make our streets safe. This happened most recently at the October 2nd Parking and Traffic Safety Meeting discussing Lang Road. It's also produced a watered-down Bartlett Street, eliminated traffic calming options on Woodbury, and has changed the traffic calming project in front of my house on McKinley from a traffic calming project to a road widening project. So the chief knows best when a new fire truck should be purchased. However, I think that this massive expenditure should be coupled with the following. First, a specific requirement for all future trucks to be compatible with speed cushions. Those are speed tables that are split to accommodate a fire truck wheelbase. Second, more consideration of smaller response vehicles that can navigate traffic calming elements more easily when a large ladder truck is not required, since it seems that most trips the department takes are not fire response, they are EMS, but the chief knows best. Third, a guidance document for public consumption like Santa Clara County does, which explains where and how speed cushions can be constructed for the many residents that are asking for rapid implementation of traffic calming measures, rather than capital improvement plan traffic engineering. I want to reiterate, number one, this expenditure should not be authorized without a specific requirement for all future trucks to have compatibility with speed cushions and the chief's approval of this or a similar strategy. The Fire Department is essential to safe streets and the measures we implement. Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. Counsel Bagley? Wait, hold on, is there anybody else on the Zoom? We've got to close the public hearing. Counsel Bagley?
I appreciate Tyler's comments and, you know, the biggest request we get at Parking, Traffic and Safety by far is from neighborhoods wanting to slow down traffic, and one of the measures that we can use is speed tables or speed cushions. I'd be cautious about us adding any verbiages requested for two reasons. One, when we did the test on Woodbury, what we realized is that when cars pull over to the sides, the fire trucks, primarily the ambulances, which often have somebody that is not in ideal condition to be going over a large bump, they can't straddle the pillows because the cars that are pulled over onto the shoulder force the ambulance into the middle of the road instead of to where they can straddle it. So on paper, the idea looked really good and promising. When we went through and actually did the pilot last summer, we found it really wasn't ideal, and, you know, it's not ideal to drive a heavy fire truck full of water over a speed cushion, but I think the real issue is if you have somebody with injuries, you don't want to be going over these bumps while you're trying to get them to the hospital. So that's one of the challenges we face. The second challenge we face is, unlike in New York City or Boston, our Fire Department, we have three stations, each station has a truck and an ambulance, and they respond to all the different calls. We need apparatus that is kind of like a Swiss Army knife. We need a truck that can handle the tall buildings downtown, but can also handle a small house fire. We don't have the luxury of having, you know, 80 different fire trucks, and we can take the perfect truck to each call. We have to have trucks that can go to any call, and in a city with a dense downtown like ours, we, we're at much more risk of a catastrophic fire than a lot of municipalities, so we really have to have that equipment that can handle those challenges, as well as the equipment that can handle the day-to-day EMT response, which is the vast majority of our calls.
Counsel Bagley? Just a question for the chief on this. Is there any other, I mean, I guess, it sounds like if we're buying these seven months in advance from even getting them, there's?
Years.
Seven years.
Seven years. Trying to shave off seven months. I guess I'm just curious, are there competing, it seems like maybe there's not a lot of difference among the standardization of that. Would that be accurate, or is there a whole lot, and some of these are better served?
No, there are different manufacturers that serve different needs. The challenge that we have here is that we're looking for an aerial device, which tends to take longer because they're much bigger, and then you have the ladder, and we have ours with a pump and water on it, which again just changes the dynamics considerably when it gets into engineering.
Okay. Any other questions, the council? Thank you, chief. We will need a?
Yep. Your Honor, I'd move to adopt the resolution as presented.
Second.
And we need a roll call vote.
Yes. Assistant Mayor Kelly?
Yes.
Counselor Taber?
Yes.
Counselor Cook?
Yes.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counsel Blaylock?
Yes.
Counsel Bagley?
Yes.
Counsel Moreau?
Yes.
Counsel Lombardi?
Yes.
Mayor McCaffrey?
Yes.
Unanimous?
Onto the city manager's items, which require action. Thank you, Kelly.
Welcome.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have one item tonight, and it is approval of a change to the authorized representative for the Education Coalition Communities 2.0 New Hampshire. 10 months ago, the city council was granted authorization for another two-year renewal of the city's involvement in the Education Coalition Communities 2.0 membership, which allows the city to work with its member colleague cities and towns to share the cost of professional services in advocating and educating on the need to not bring back the donor and receiver education funding formula. And things were going swimmingly, and we had a very untimely death of the chair of the joint board of our organization. He was the wonderful town manager up in Waterville Valley, and as such, the board is looking to be reconstituted. And typically, the triumvirate of Portsmouth reps would be me as the voting member with Nathan Lunny and Jane Farini backstopping and providing all of the expertise behind the scenes. Given that the board is looking to be reconstituted, and we feel a sense of obligation to be, to play a role on the board now that there are openings, and we really have a big stake in this, Nathan is willing to step up now that he also carries the title of deputy city manager, because one of the ways to qualify to be on this board is you either have to be an elected official or a city manager or deputy city manager. So Nathan has kindly been voluntold or has agreed to switch roles with me. He is a lot more articulate, he can lead the conversation. There will be legislative efforts this coming session that he and Jane will champion, and I will certainly backstop now, but I would feel more comfortable if Nathan were the voting member from the city and sitting as a board member. Now, I say this preemptively, the board will meet tomorrow, the entire group of communities, we will offer to be on the board, so I don't want to suggest that Nathan's on a board before the communities have had a chance to talk about it. But given that we have a large stake in this, in this conversation, we would like to offer to be, have a seat at the table, and Nathan would be the most appropriate from the city.
Your Honor, I move to authorize Nathan D. Lunny, deputy city manager of Finance and Administration, as the city's authorized representative to the Education Coalition Communities 2.0 NH.
Second.
Any discussion? Counsel Cook?
Thank you, Your Honor. I just wanted to say thank you to deputy city manager Lunny for his willingness to step forward and for his expertise in this area.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Nathan. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Thank you.
Next, no items under the consent agenda. We have email correspondence under written communication.
Your Honor, I move to accept and place on file.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We have first an appointment to be considered of Tara Ricks to the Cemetery Committee at the next city council meeting, and then an appointment to be voted, that is of Patricia Bagley to the Trees and Public Greenery Committee.
Your Honor, I move to reappoint, the reappointment of Patricia Bagley to the Grees and Public Greenery Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? Counsel Bagley?
I just want to say, that's my aunt, and, you know, she's extensive knowledge in trees and loves the city and the trees in it, so I think she's a great asset to the city.
Thanksgiving will go easier.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would just like to echo Counselor Bagley's statements. I sit as the council representative on the Trees and Greenery, and over the last four years, I've learned so much, not only from our former chair, Peter Lotland, but also our current chair, Pat Bagley, and she's done a really great job at keeping us engaged all throughout the month and really spearing the education aspect for our committee, so I'm really excited, and she's, we're going to keep going as chair. I hope you hear that, Pat. You're not going anywhere.
That's excellent, and regardless of whether or not you related to her, Pat is certainly a force at public comment, but it's always appreciative when somebody that speaks at public comment and engages in the city does also the work and volunteers. Not everybody is able to. Pat is able to lend her services and expertise to the city, and we're appreciative of that. So thank you, Pat. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up, Counsel Taber.
Yes, Your Honor, I would move to request the Legal Department draft an ordinance for first reading, amending the Chapter 1 Administrative Code, Article 4, Commissions and Authorities, Section 1.414, to establish a permanent energy advisory academy at the meeting of November 17th, 2025. If I get a second, I'll speak to that.
Second.
Second.
The energy advisory was created back in 2021 to launch community power, and the mayor has reappointed the members in the last two terms. And after we got community power up and running, we looked at other energy committees around the state, and some of which are very, very effective, and the committee built a program of work, which I tried to share with everybody in the packet, around the mission of a lower-cost, lower-carbon energy future for Portsmouth. Some of the things we've been working on, we've been researching and recommending a municipal solar array for the Jones Avenue landfill. We've done a number of information sessions for citizens, a button-up program on energy reduction in your home, solar conversations run by Betsy Blaisdell. And we've been working with the city's energy management firm, EEI, to learn more about reducing city energy costs. And lastly, one of our members spearheaded a no-cost evaluation by the National Energy Lab to look at green energy sources for the wastewater treatment camp. So that's the kind of work that the committee's been doing. There was discussion with staff about whether this should be part of the Sustainability Committee or separate, and in the end, the Energy Advisory Committee felt that their role is more technical, and I think the membership reflects that, and that there would be a long-term value of having their technical expertise. So for all those reasons, we thought, that and not having to be reappointed every two years, we thought that we should make this committee permanent, because I do think it adds value and expertise that we otherwise wouldn't get.
Counsel Taber? Counsel Cook?
Thank you, Your Honor. I wanted to say, I've had the honor of serving on the Energy Advisory Committee with Counselor Taber and the other committees' members for the last two terms on the council, and this group of individuals has a level of expertise that we cannot duplicate as a city internally. We couldn't hire for this level of expertise. So we truly benefit from them serving the city. We are extremely fortunate that they're willing to do so, and I think that establishing a permanent committee would help secure that level of expertise for the city of Portsmouth in the long run.
Any other comments, questions, first reading, so it will go to second reading if this is successful, and certainly hopefully it will be. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next up, we have Counsel Cook.
Oh, wait, no. Audit Committee, sorry, Counsel Taber. Don't forget the Audit Committee. You haven't heard from the Audit Committee for a while, but I'll just remind us all that the purpose of the Audit Committee is to advise the council on selection of an auditor, the auditor that does our required annual financial review and audit. It's not an oversight committee, as a lot of, some people may think. It's really a selection committee, and if there are issues in the audit, it's empowered to assist the council in figuring out what the problems are. So the committee met last week. We did not, as we have always done in the past, bring the Audit Committee to the January presentation of the 2024 fiscal results. So we reviewed that 2024 audit, and it was a strong audit, very positive, and we had a good discussion about the city's AAA bond rating and how the fund balance and reserve policies work. And then we also talked about our current auditor, CLA's contract, which ends in June, and we discussed options for other auditing firms. There's really only one other major player. The firm used to be known as Melanson. They went through a merger, and they've again gone through a merger. So after discussion and input from staff who feel that CLA is doing a very, very good job for us, we voted to recommend to the council that we stay with CLA when their contract's up in 2026, and particularly in light of the migration to new finance software they're undertaking right now, and CLA has a strong IT group and is capable of working through that transition. So that's, that's what the Audit Committee did.
Counsel Taber? Any questions for Counsel Taber? Going to Counsel Cook.
Thank you, Your Honor. You will see in your packet a municipal arts and cultural banner program policy for your review. We've had, we've had this discussion at the council a few times, but in working with the Legal Department and the Arts and Cultural Commission, we finally decided that this was the appropriate way to bring this forward as a policy, directing the city manager to establish the program, which we then would anticipate that we would have a group of individuals that set up guidelines for how it's implemented. I'm not asking you to vote on it tonight. I wanted to make sure it was in your packet so that everyone in the council would have an opportunity to review it, and then it will come back in your packet at the next council meeting for approval.
Thank you, Counsel Cook. Any questions now for Counsel Cook? We'll save them for the next meeting. Counsel Bagley?
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a couple items for approval. The first is to approve renewal of annual valet license agreement for Hampton Inn and Suites. Second. And I'll just, there's a second one that ties in with this one, but just a piece of information, is Portwalk Place is unique in that it is a privately held road in the center of our city, so what we do, because residents and visitors wouldn't, we don't want this, the road to be ill-kept or not kept up to the city's standards, so even though it's a privately held road, the city runs it like the rest of the roads in the city, and then the valet and parking revenue from that road goes to maintain that specific road. So just a little piece of information, because it comes up from time to time.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And, Your Honor, I move to approve the renewal of the annual valets license agreement for Merritt Residence Inn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
And, Your Honor, I move to approve and accept the action sheet and minutes of the October 2nd, 2025 Parking, Traffic and Safety Committee meeting.
Second.
Not a lot here that I want to highlight, except for one thing, we will be holding a sidewalk in Counsel Moreau's neighborhood on the 28th at 8:00 AM. There's a driveway that is being proposed that is closer to an intersection that is normally allowed. This has been analyzed, it'll actually make the street safer and the sightlines better. However, it may affect the parking a little bit in the neighborhood, so I wanted to make sure anybody in the neighborhood that might be interested about this change would be aware that there's going to be a sidewalk on?
It's in my calendar.
Okay. So I just wanted to highlight that.
That's it, it's in Counsel Moreau's calendar.
It's coming up, and then, you know, normal, regular stuff. One of the things that's been happening in our community and communities around the country is there's three levels of e-bikes that have become really popular, class one, two, and three, and then a little bit more recently, there's kind of an on-class, like faster than class three would be, so they're unclassified, and they're really popular with our younger residents that maybe aren't old enough to drive yet, and they go as fast as essentially a motorcycle, so there's a lot of safety issues with. essentially a motorcycle, so there's a lot of safety issues with young drivers who don't really understand the rules of the road going, you know, fifty miles an hour down Middle Street. So our police department has done a series of talks, they have a pamphlet, it's really about education, not enforcement. I don't know if the stats are still true, but when they gave the presentation a couple weeks ago, they had done seventy pullovers essentially, but they hadn't written any tickets. They, you know, talked to the parents and sometimes they brought the bike back to the house and said, you know, this is riding a bike at night, fifty miles an hour with no lights is unsafe and not something they want to have happen. So they're just highlighting that's a new issue that, you know, we come across as technology evolves. The other thing that is going on as we get construction updates, South and Middle is finally under construction for the, I'm sorry, South and Miller. The pedestrian singles haven't worked there for a while, I know it's been very frustrating to people. The equipment was so antiquated that we couldn't fix it and we were waiting for the mass that holds the lights to come in and I guess that's on its way and they've been digging up the street and, you know, hopefully in the next couple of weeks, we'll have a functioning intersection there again for the next twenty or thirty years.
Excellent. Thank you, Counsel Bagley. Counsel Moreau.
Can I ask a question about the bikes? I was blown away one day when I saw a gentleman on what looked like a wheel with his two feet going like twenty, thirty miles an hour down Islington Street. I almost fell over. I don't even know what it is. How did, there's no steering? He's just standing on either side of a wheel going that fast down.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
Those are the kind of things that pull you over.
Yeah, there's a lot of.
That looks really unsafe to me.
There's a lot of new technology that allows you to go fast on effectively a unicycle or a skateboard or an electric bike that didn't exist five or 10 years ago or wasn't readily economically feasible and our police department doesn't have the laws to handle it, but what they're doing is a really proactive job of getting into the schools, talking to the companies that sell this equipment, talking to the parents, because in a lot of cases, teenagers.
What about the adults? Because this did not look like a child.
They'll talk to anybody on them, but it's mostly a youth issue and we just, what we want is for people to not be in serious accidents and there have been a number of those this summer and it's usually the bike versus a tree or on the sidewalk. It's not other vehicles or pedestrians involved for the most part, it's usually just that person, but because of the rate of speed, the outcome is not always ideal.
Thank you, Counsel Bagley and again, thanks to the police department, does that work for education while the laws catch up? Any other discussion on action minutes? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? No grants or donations this week. City manager, two informational items.
Yes, thank you, they're quick items. As everyone knows and is sad to recognize, the farmer's market is coming to a close this Saturday. I've taken up the tradition of trying to visit the market on a monthly basis and I will be there this Saturday morning and usually I cajole a staff member or two into joining me. What I'd like to do is extend that opportunity and effort to residents to be able to create this year-round, monthly meeting with the manager, so to speak, outside of City Hall. So the library will be my new host from November through April and I've published the dates here and it would be great to hear from people when there isn't a farmer's market. So the second item would be the annual sharing of the food permit information. As you know, our health department has to permit all the folks who use food in some way by the end of September and their information is, has been provided to you. So we still have way more restaurant seats than people, there's been some changing of restaurants, there's also been some new business in the pipeline, but just provide this for your edification.
Thank you, city manager.
[inaudible].
Seeing none, nothing miscellaneous, I will, well, I guess this is the last council meeting before the election, so wish everyone that's running a good fortune and to those that will be watching, Counsel Denton and Counsel Lombardi, thank you for all you've done, we will celebrate you at the year's end, but to all those watching at home that are running, thank you for stepping up to wanting to serve Portsmouth and we'll see you after the election. A weight of motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Good day, Portsmouth.